Good evening, I'll call this meeting of the Cartersville City Council to order. Please stand for invocation and pledge.
Join me as we pray. Our dear gracious heavenly Father, we come to you tonight with Thanksgiving in our hearts for what you've done for us. And in this week, this holy week that we celebrate Easter Sunday, we, our hearts and our minds are drawn to the sacrifice of the cross and what your Son did for us there. So we celebrate that tonight and we give you thanks for that. And may our hearts and minds be turned to the Eternal this weekend and give, at least give some thought to our relationship with a holy God. Tonight, we come to do the business of the city and we thank you for that opportunity to do that. We ask that you would continue to give us wisdom and knowledge beyond our own and we'd make just, fair, and right decisions. And we ask these things in your holy name, amen.
Please join me in the pledge. My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Grayth Roll, please.
Carrie Hyde, Ward 1 here. Jay Step, Ward 2. Carrie Roth, Ward 3.
Here.
Calvin Cooley, Ward 4.
Here.
Gary Fox, Ward 5.
Here.
Kath Ren, Ward 6.
Here.
Thank you, Julie. First order of business is the approval of our two council meeting minutes. We had a regularly scheduled meeting on March 18th and then we had the called special meeting on March 23rd. The council has received the minutes of, well, in advance of this evening, and an opportunity to review them. Now would be the time to make any corrections, edits, or other. And if there are none, then a motion is in order.
Motion to approve both sets of minutes.
Second.
All in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Both sets of minutes are approved. With council's permission, I would like to take the item that was tabled at our last meeting regarding gymnastics provider off the table and move that to the top of the agenda. I need a motion for that. Thank you. Motion to second, all in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, items off the table. Ms. Porter.
Yes, Mayor, this, as you recall, was discussed at the last council meeting. And after our last council meeting, Tom Gillen and myself met with Stingrays and moving forward, we also met with the Booster Club. The recommendation is to basically deny or do not move forward as program provider with Stingrays. And that would be my recommendation of myself to no longer move forward with, agreeing with Stingrays.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? We'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion that we deny the contract with the Stingrays and move forward with the Booster Club.
Second.
All in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. I do want to make just a quick comment. I want to thank the participation and the feedback. I want to thank council for being responsible and looking at all aspects of this. I want to thank the city staff that has provided the council with the tools. And again, everybody up here makes decisions for what is best for our community. We do that with the best information we have. We ask questions and we got, we got answers. But the other thing that's important is that we listen to the people that we serve. And if there's one lesson to be learned, people have asked over the last couple of weeks, "Oh man, I bet you're beaten up." You know, you feel, and I said the exact opposite. I'm energized and I hope the thing that people take from this, especially the ones that are sitting on the floor, that were staring daggers at me two weeks ago.[263.64][263.64](Laughter). I got a theater program across the street, send me all need to get in. The important thing is that, that we do listen and that local elected officials, this is the way things should work, that when something's important, you should be able to stand up and have leaders that want to listen, that want to react. The fact that the Booster Club hasn't just come and said, "No, fund this," they've said, "No, we want to be part of the solution." And we'll be having follow-up meetings to find that solution and, in a way to move forward. So, again, I'm energized by this because this is, I think this is why everybody up here serves. I know that that is. And I know that everybody's heart and head is in the right place. And I said it last week, this was never at one moment about the professionals who care about your kids and who do an excellent job and have for years. It has never been about the quality of the program or the quality of the people who are providing that program. It is simply the fiduciary responsibility that we have as council members to do what's best for every single taxpayer in the city. So, again, if there's a message to be had, it's that we are going to move forward and try to find solutions together. And that, you know, this is the way that it should work. And again, I thank council for allowing me to drill down a little bit about it. Good luck trying to stop me ever doing that. So, that being said, y'all are welcome to stay for this entire meeting. You can learn an awful lot. But you could also go home if you want to too and you want her feelings, okay?[355.12][355.12](Applause). I'm going to count to 20.[368.52][368.52](Laughter).
Just like I say, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, Mr. Manino, follow that up with AZ 21-03.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is a proposed annexation and rezoning of a single lot 112 U. Harley Road. It sits between two other single-family lots that are both in the city jurisdiction. It was recommended for approval from the Planning Commission. It is a second reading. There have been no additions or changes since the first reading.
Okay. Thank you. Are there questions for Randy at this time? Thank you, sir. At this time, I'll open up a public hearing for the zoning portion of the request, AZ 21-03, and ask anybody wishing to speak for or against to step forward at this time. And I've got a new task for you tonight. Welcome back. If you could, outside, there's a sign-up sheet.
I did.
You already did it?
Yes.
Thank you very much for that. That helps Julie out an awful lot. So thank you for doing that, please. Your name and your address for the record.
McKevia Crosby, 112 U. Harley Road, Cartersville, Georgia, 30120. I do thank you guys for everything. I would say it's not as hard as most people made it seem. And I've enjoyed coming down, learned more things than what I thought I knew about city hall or city council than just paying a bill. But not really sure as to what steps to take after the process is completed here.
Okay. Well, after council takes action, one of those two gentlemen right there can tell you what to do next, right?
Sure. Now, with the school system, let's just get with the school system and let them know that it has an amendment. At least official paperwork will go with it to allow David to prepare whether it has an examiner now, I believe he's had a very significant Florida department out of water that now be in the city's water service area. Or you're already in the city water service area, so that's a good reason.
That goes through the process to internal, make sure that that information is shared with the correct departments. But first, council, I'll take official action.
Yeah. Basically, if council approves it tonight, once you get the letter from David Hartagree in the mail, you can then go to the school system and work that out. Everything else happens internally on the city. There's really nothing you need to do at that point.
Okay.
Okay?
All right. Well, thank you guys and have the Easter.
Oh, except for you will need to go to the elections office and make sure they've switched you over from a county to a city before the next election. They should do that automatically, but I always tell people, you want to check that yourself.
Just to be sure.
Yeah.
All right. But I do appreciate it and have the Easter again.
Thank you. Continuing the zoning portion of the application for AZ 21-03, anybody wishing to step forward and speak for or against may do so at this time. Seeing none, I'll close the zoning hearing for AZ 21-03 and open up the annexation portion of that request. And again, ask anybody who wishes to step forward, speak for or against, do so at this time. And seeing none, I'll close the annexation portion, turn it over to council for consideration on the annexation portion of the request 21-03. Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Zoning portion of the request, AZ 21-03.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Manino, SU 21-01.
Thank you again, Mayor and Council. This is a request for a special use permit to place a church in a strip shopping center along West Avenue. Address is 807 West Avenue. It's in Suite D. It went through the review process and this is a second reading. There have been no additions or changes since the first reading.
Questions for Randy on this request? Thank you, sir. Open up a public hearing for SU 21-01. Ask anybody wishing to make comment, step forward at this time. We got you in at the right time this week.[648.54][648.54](Laughter). Little less hectic, we'll get you out here a little bit earlier. Welcome back.
Thank you. First, I want to thank y'all for approving the ladies and young men for their gymnastics. I didn't realize while I've been dealing with Ms. Hudson, she got me enrolled in Boy Scouts. And I went for dinner last Friday and I went by the facility and I was like, I remember this facility because of my son's older cousin, we had his birthday, his fifth birthday party in that facility and I was like, I texted with Rogers and I was like, "Do you know these two names?" And I go, and she said, "Yes." And so I got two nieces that are part of this program, so I want to officially thank you all for approving that.
Thank you, sir.
All right, as far as the church, I'd say, basically it is just something new for my pastor. She lost her husband, who was also a pastor. We buried him like about three months ago. And it's basically, it's something starting, we had been dealing, working out into the county and now we're trying to work into the city. The West Avenue address is easily accessible because they were prominent residents of both Cedar Town and Rockmark, so it's a quick access right off the highway where they don't have to really travel all through town and get lost and things like that. So, just basically wait on you guys to do whatever you need to do and we'll go from there.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? And again, if you, did you happen to sign the signature?
Yes, I did, sir.
Thank you for doing that. That's a new thing.
Do you mind telling me your name?
Dan Crum.
Okay.
36 Franklin W.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to step forward, speak for or against, may do so at this time. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, turn it over to council for final consideration.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. SU 21-02.
Thank you again, Mayor and Council. This is a special use permit request for the property located at 215 West Avenue for an accessory apartment. The applicant also went through the Historic Preservation Commission. They have recommended, or they did approve their portion, now the Planning Commission did recommend approval. And with that, staff had also recommended approval.
Thank you. Questions for Randy on this item? I'll open up a public hearing for SU 21-02. Anybody wishing to speak for or against, may do so at this time.
Evening, Mayor and Council. Boyd Morris, 125 Post Hill Street of Copeland Morris, representing the applicant, just here to answer any questions if there are any.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to step forward, speak for or against, may do so at this time? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing for SU 21-02 and turn it to council for final consideration.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Manino, last one for you tonight.
Yes, thank you again, Mayor and Council. This is a proposed text amendment dealing with the fence requirements in our ordinance. This was a staff-initiated text amendment. It is a second reading. There have been no additions or changes since the first reading. And the purpose of it was to clarify location appropriateness of chain link fencing. The language was vague and we tried to fix that.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Randy prior to public hearing? Thank you. Open up a public hearing for T. 21-01. Anybody wishing to step forward, speak for or against, may do so at this time? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing portion of 21-01 and turn it over to council for consideration.
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Lovell.
Yes, Mayor, as y'all recall, this is the second reading of ordinance amending the festival zone, basically to allow the cups used for the downtown entertainment zone to be used in festivals. It is recommended by staff for your approval.
Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
All in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Forsythe. And actually, while you're making your way up, Chair was going to entertain a motion to add an item?
Canceled.
Second.
All in favor to say aye?
Aye.
That item's added. If you'll just add that at the end, Sidney, please.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is a high-service pump, electrical switchgear upgrade at the water treatment plant. We have four high-service pumps pumping all the water to the city. We've replaced the switchgear on two of the older ones. These are the next two. These were installed in 1991. And again, it's just the electrical switchgear and starters for those motors. Those are 1,000 horsepower motors and it's kind of rough on starters to run those as much as we do. This is engineering services for that replacement from Weedman and Singleton. They will design, bid, and manage the construction of that project for a cost of $65,000. Recommend for approval.
Thank you. Questions for Sidney on this item?
I should have asked this earlier. This is just for the engineering design, like the whole project is quite a bit.
The whole project will be much more. This is not material or construction. This is merely design, bidding, advertisement, and construction management for the project.
Right, because I just want to make that, because I know we were talking about $65,000, but in the full scope of this, this is like 10% of what we're looking at or somewhere around that number?
Hopefully less than 10% or more than 10% of that, but yes, sir.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure that we have verification, this is not the project, that there's a lot larger piece than that.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion or questions? If not, a motion's in order.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Continue on, Sidney, please.
Yes, sir. This is another engineering services item for the same engineer, Weedman and Singleton. And this is to upgrade the high-pressure portion of the distribution system. It's essentially providing water, everything east, on East Main Street, east of about the coal shopping center, across I-75, over to Center Road, including Center Road, across 75, and supplies a, that portion of Barco County water as well, is being provided by one pump station. We have another pump station. It is outdated, it's undersized and underpowered. And this project looks at rebuilding or refurbishing that pump station to increase the reliability and redundancy of that system. That cost is $9,500. And again, that is just the engineering services.
Okay. Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next one, please, Sidney.
Yes, sir. This is a payment due from a memorandum of agreement that council had approved with the Atlanta Regional Commission, working above and with the Metropolitan North Georgia Water Planning District, which the city is a part of, the city and the county are part of. And it essentially not negotiates, but monitors and writes the rules for water resources in this part of the state. This payment gets us essentially a seat at the table so that we are involved in negotiations and planning for that water user group. This is an annual invoice split evenly between Barco County and the city of Cartersville. Our portion this year is for $25,000.
Okay.
Recommend for your approval.
Thank you. Any discussion? If not, a motion is in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. And now that added item, please, Mr. Forsythe.
Yes, sir. This is, this is for an emergency repair of our 36-inch sewer line. And it passes directly behind, you can see there, 473 Waterford Drive. And I've highlighted there the portion of that line. And this is a main truck line draining the entire downtown area and it goes around through Waterford into the, directly into the wastewater treatment plant. This past week, we were notified of a, an issue on that line. It passes through a ditch and it's, if you can go ahead into the next one. That's the line there. You can see it transitions from a concrete line to a steel line inside the ditch there. When that was built, it was underground. Over the years, it has been exposed in that drainage ditch. And if you can go to the next one, right there is the problem. You can see it used to have a concrete collar covering that and sealing it up. Half of the concrete collar is gone and that's a direct exposure to sewage. Today, there is a mastiff covering that, so you can't get into it, nothing can get out. No sewage leaked into the water. The bottom half of that is still sealed, so, if you can go to the next one there. The difficulty here is actually getting to the property. This is just another view. Let me show one more. This is the back of 473 Waterford Drive, which is the most reasonable access point to that repair. So, having said all that, I have a, or we have a price to repair that for $30,210 from Kirkpatrick and Sons Pipeline. But also, we will need to repair whatever damage we do getting to that pipeline to repair it. It'll be a sizable excavator that needs to traverse that route, get into the pipe. The picture I took there, I was standing on the pipe, so all of that we need to go across. So, we'll probably end up replacing a large portion of that concrete driveway and as well as any sod and soil that we damaged. I am recommending a not-to-exceed price for the entire repair of $65,000.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Sidney on this item? When do you anticipate doing this?
They were doing locates today.
Okay.
So as soon as possible.
And you said it's about a two-day project?
It'll be about two days.
Okay. Thank you. If there's no other discussion, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, sir. Mr. Greer, you are up next, I believe.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This item is to replace the original hardware system that runs the New World software that we use for public safety for all police and fire in all county and city entities. Our portion of this is 19.3% of the total project, which comes out to just over $55,000. This is a 2020 SPOS project and I recommend this period of approval.
Okay. Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. Chief Carter, good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I bring before you this evening a repair project that you actually saw in August of 2020. You approved this particular repair project at the driveway at Station 4 that's over on MLK. The repair is necessary due to the heavy truck traffic that goes in and out of Station 4 and ruts had developed within the asphalt. The work approved in August was to be completed by our Public Works Division. However, this past year, there's been a little thing called COVID. And then also the aggressive workload that they have, they simply are not going to be able to get to this project by the end of this fiscal year. The project that we're bringing back to you because we're approaching the end of this fiscal year, we sought a third-party contractor who can do the work for us. And we have a low bid that falls within our budget. And I'm respectfully requesting tonight that the Mayor and Council that you rescind the project that you approved at the August 6 council meeting of 2020 and then approve the firm from Taylorsville, Georgia called Complete Crete for a construction price of $12,240. This is $1,760 below our budgeted amount.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Is there any discussion? If not, Chair will entertain a motion that reflects the chief's wishes.
Motion to rescind the prior bid and to accept the new contractor bid.
Second.
All in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
And the next item that I have, sir, is, this is a two-year replacement program that we're beginning tonight of all of our AEDs, automated external defibrillators that we use in cardiac arrest situations. A lot of the ones that we're replacing are greater than 10 years of age. There's been some changes within cardiac science with a particular brand that we carry. No longer are they going to be able to support it or manufacture in that brand. So we're going to be moving to a newer AED, some more up-to-date. Current review of the brands and models, we have decided to stay with cardiac science because the G5 model has a long lifespan ahead of it. It's a good, robust model. It integrates with our equipment and with our training that we already have. So we're asking tonight for a recommended approval of a low quote with Boundtree Medical for a total of $8,688.66. This will purchase six G5 AEDs. This will replace all of the frontline AEDs on our emergency equipment. And next year, we'll come back to replace all the other ones in the support vehicles and through the station.
Okay. Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Make a motion to approve this purchase.
Second.
All in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Fiduciary insurance policy renewal, Mr. Porter.
Yes, Mayor, this is an annual renewal that covers all our boards and it's through Philadelphia Insurance Company, recommended approval, $14,025 invoice.
Any discussion, if not a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next one, please, Dan.
Yes, sir. This is the Bartow County African-American Heritage Coordinator position. This is something we discussed at the visioning session this past January, working with the CBB in Bartow County. Each participant agreed to pay $8,000 towards the $24,000 amount for this position. It would be a contract position with the CBB, asking for council approval for our portion of the 8,000, plus it'd be paid for with the Torreson Product Development Funds.
Thank you. Any discussion? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
I'll second it.
All in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. And Mr. Reinhardt, the floor is yours, sir.
I'm the Mayor and Council. Tonight, I have Christopher McKeller with our audit firm, Mollin Jenkins. He's here to give a brief presentation of the fiscal year 2020 audit.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for having me this evening. Like Tom mentioned, my name is Christopher McKeller with Mollin Jenkins. I'm a director with Mollin Jenkins. And I'm here to present the audit results for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2020. You should have before you a document that contains the auditor's discussion and analysis, which will be the first part of the binder that you have. And then the comprehensive annual financial report, which is a little bit smaller than mine, but it's in that same document. I will stick pretty close to the auditor's discussion and analysis. It has the audit results, a few financial highlights, and some required communications. But certainly, if there's anything in the comprehensive annual financial report that y'all want to discuss, just let me know. On page two, this gives just some general information about Mollin Jenkins and our governmental practice. As you can see there, it's, the governmental practice is approximately twenty-eight percent of our firm, so it's a good bit of what we do. Over the past three years, we've audited approximately five hundred governments throughout the southeast. Doug Moses was the engagement quality control partner on the engagement with twenty-plus years of experience. Then if we'll flip over to page four, this is the audit results. As you can see there, the financial statements are the responsibility of management, and our responsibility as external auditors is to express an opinion on the fair presentation of the financial statements based on our audit. What I'm sure you all would like to know is how did the city do? And I'm pleased to report that the city, or we did issue an unmodified or clean opinion, which is what you would want, and this just means that the financial statements present fairly in all material respects. Page five gives just an overview of the comprehensive annual financial report. You'll see there that the comprehensive annual financial report goes above and beyond the required financial statements. It includes the introductory section and the statistical section, which gives a ten-year history of certain financial highlights for the city. I like to draw people's attention to the management discussion and analysis, which is in the front part. This gives an overview of the financial statements, kind of like a Cliff Notes. Tells you why balances changed and how much they changed. So, if you want to read something a little less than the two-hundred-page document, that's a good place to start. So, I would like to commend the city on preparing a comprehensive annual financial report, and I'd like to point out Tom and the finance department for all that they do to put this document together. A lot goes into preparing for us to come in and do the financial statement audit. On page six, just a general overview of the city as a whole. The statement of net position, kind of like your balance sheet, has total assets of four hundred and eighty-six point six million of assets and a hundred and fifty-nine point three million of liabilities, which leaves a total net position of approximately three hundred and twenty-seven point three million. Then this is further broken down into a net investment in capital assets of approximately two hundred and forty-six point three million, and an unrestricted net position of seventy-three point four million. The statement of activities, or income statement, if you will, did show an increase in net position this year of approximately fifteen point five million. And I'll go over just a few general fund highlights. This is the main operating fund of the city. There was approximately seventeen point one million of general fund revenues and approximately twenty-seven million of expenditures. The general fund fund balance was approximately six point eight million, or twenty-five percent of annual expenditures, and the unassigned fund balance, which is not restricted or committed, was approximately two point eight million, or ten point five percent of general fund expenditures. Generally, GFPA recommends two to three months, or seventeen to twenty-five percent of expenditures in fund balance. So, just something to be aware of and keep a watch on. The cash flows increased for all proprietary funds, with the exception of water sewer, and that was just due to a large CIP project that was going on during the year. So, nothing of concern there. Then I will skip over to page fourteen. This has some of our required communications. You can see middle of the page there, we encountered no disagreements with management over the application of significant accounting principles. And then on page fifteen, we are independent of the city, which is required by AICPA standards and is what you would want from your external auditor. Page sixteen is some accounting recommendations. We did have two findings this year. One related to the workers' comp liability, and another just related to revenue recognition. I'd like to point out that there was no, nothing fraudulent that we're aware of. These are simply accounting adjustments that had to be made, and the standards require us to assess those for controlled deficiency purposes, and the dollar amount rose them to the level of the finding. On page seventeen, there are just a few management points or management recommendations. These do not rise to the level of the finding and are immaterial, but just certain things that we wanted to point out to make management aware of going forward. On page nineteen, this is some upcoming GASP pronouncements. I definitely won't go through all of these. The one that will be upcoming to be implemented for next year is GASP Statement Number eighty-four, related to fiduciary activities, where you'll go through and look at all your fiduciary arrangements to determine how they should be reported next year. So, we will work with finance on getting that implemented next year. And that's all I have this evening, unless there are any comments or anything you want to dive into further.
Any questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Does that require a motion or any kind of approval?
No, that was just a report presentation.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any other business that needs to come before council this evening?
Mayor, I did have a statement I wanted to remind Council about.
Sure. Go ahead.
As y'all know, the City of Carthville Police Department conducted an undercover sting operation on selling to minors earlier this year. That has gone through the process of the Alcohol Control Board, and of the twenty-one establishments that were cited for violations, all either pled no contest or guilty. However, four of those establishments have decided to appeal their decisions to the city council. What they're appealing, as I understand, is the length of the probation and/or the fine amount, not that the violation actually occurred. I want to remind you, and these will all be done at y'all's next council meeting, I want to remind you that in these types of matters, you are sitting in a quasi-judicial role. So, unlike a lot of things where you interact with your constituents and you may talk about what's upcoming on the agenda or the items, you should not discuss these matters with any of the potential appellant. And any discussions you should have about those should only happen here at the council meeting.
Does that include conversations amongst members of council?
Yes.
Okay. So, basically, don't talk about it, just review it?
Don't talk about it until you get your package and you review it, and they'll come up and, there are appeals on the record, so all of the, all they will do is make an oral argument. Y'all will have all the documents. Videos will be available if y'all want to watch them, and then you make whatever decision y'all want to make with respect to each one.
So, all four of these are on the fifteenth?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Keith regarding this? Thank you. Any other business that needs to come before council? Would you like to speak, sir?
Yes.
Yeah, come on up, and if you would, your name and your address, and then if you'd be so kind as to put that on the sheet of paper that's outside if you haven't already. And that's just so our clerk can make sure it's in the minutes correctly, okay?
It's Billy Ray Robinson. I live at Wingfoot Subdivision, thirty-nine St. Port, Carthville. Sometime last year, I suppose it was, in Waterford subdivision, the city paid for the labor of installing sidewalks. I tried to get more information on this, I believe, from the Public Works head, but it was rudely accepted. I'm just wondering why the city taxpayers. And I know that, I realize that when a subdivision is built and the sidewalks are paid for by me and the other buyers of the houses, and after it's turned over to the city, the city's in charge of the sidewalks. But Rutt Waterford was built without sidewalks. So, why did the city, my tax dollars, pay for sidewalks in Waterford, which is one of the wealthiest subdivisions in Carthville? So, I'm sure their HOA would have been capable of paying for it.
The sidewalk was, when that subdivision was built, those development regulations were not in place.
I understand.
So, that's why there weren't enough initially sidewalks there. The homeowners association approached us, and they paid for the materials.
Right.
For, they paid for the materials in the relocation of utilities, and the city paid, basically provided the labor, and that was because it was deemed that there was a safety issue with people nearly getting hit by vehicles. So, that was, that was the reason for that, for the public good, and we'd make decisions up here for the public good.
That was a thirty-year-old, that's a thirty-year-old subdivision, and it just never became a safety issue?
That was made aware of us by the owners. Has that developed? Yes.
Isn't it normal for an HOA to pay for these type of upgrades?
To pay for which kind of upgrades?
Well, sidewalks.
Typically, with now the development regulations that have been put in place since nineteen, either eighty-four or eighty-six, that when something is developed, the developer is responsible for the sidewalks.
That was, that wasn't too long ago. But anyway, so.
That was thirty-some-odd years ago, yes.
Did they put it in mandate?
The development regulations, the way I understand it, was either nineteen eighty-four or nineteen eighty-six, is I believe, when the development regulations were put in place that allowed for that. And I might be wrong, because Waterford, I don't think, I don't know that it was that old, but.
No, it may have been. I'm not sure whether it was or not.
But if you, if your neighborhood needed sidewalks, the city would be, if there was a safety issue or if there was a crack in it, we, our folks would come out there and repair those sidewalks, and we wouldn't be charging you anything.
Well, I understand, because I paid for sidewalks through my belt car. You know, when I bought my lot, he also included the price of the sidewalks in the lot.
Sure.
Or Waterford didn't include the price of sidewalks in the lots. And the people that bought Waterford knew that it didn't have any sidewalks in it. I'm not against having sidewalks.
Right.
That is wrong. I'm against my tax dollars paid for one of the richest neighborhoods in Carthville's sidewalks. I mean, you know, if they'd have built them, I understand, if they'd built them, then the city would be responsible for them after they were built, because it comes into easement. But anyway, so we did pay for it. How do I find out the cost of that?
I can check with the city clerk, get your information, and then we can get back, reach back out to you.
Okay. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you for being here. Any other business that needs to come before council?
Mr. Mayor, I would just like to make, remind the city council, we do have the airport freeway paving project starting on Monday, and we do have a new website, carthvilleairport.com. We've let all the tenants know, Phoenix Air is working with us, but starting on Monday, April fifth through May thirty-first, it's going to be closed. The runway is going to be closed from seven p.m. to seven a.m. As we start this about ten-million-dollar project, it's city-county funded, as well as GDOT and FAA. So, I just want to keep council abreast of that big project's going to be going on for several months to repave that runway, which hasn't been done in many, many years, decades.
Thank you. And point of clarification, Mr. Menino sent me a text and said those development regulations, the gentleman's left, but just so everybody knows and I get it correctly on the record, it was in August of nineteen ninety-eight when those development regulations were changed to require sidewalks in front of developments. Prior to that, things could get developed with that. So, it was a step in the right direction, and it was a step in the right direction to put those sidewalks in. Any other business that needs to come before council? Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn? Stay gold.